Okay, I will call the Edelman City Council regular meeting to order. It is February the tenth, two thousand and twenty six. The time is six oh three. If everybody please rise for a moment of silence. I'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of agenda is consent agenda. Item A is minutes, the regular council meeting from January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty six. I will entertain a motion.
A move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Let's pull the council.
Place one. Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item B is financials for December twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept the financials for December twenty twenty five. Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Let's pull the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item, item five is presentations. Item A is proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas this year, the Edelman City Council takes pride in recognizing February as Black History Month. This month is a time for honoring and exploring the culture and history of African Americans, as well as recognizing that our society's rich diversity is one of our greatest strengths. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political developments. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of nineteen twenty six of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas efforts by our African American citizens have been used as a model for many other citizens and groups who seek their full civil rights under the Constitution. And whereas every one of us must recognize these sacrifices, must learn about and acknowledge the truths of our history and our present, and must work for truth, for equity, and for liberty for all. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Edelman is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Jackie, would you and Bobby like to come up and accept this? Anybody else? John?
I mean, what did you say?
Let's turn around this way for me.
Mayor.
Okay, next item is citizen comments. We have none. Next item is public hearing. See, the time is six oh eight. We'll open the public hearing to receive citizens' comments on a proposed community development block grant, CDBG project for the city's twenty twenty six fifty-second-year CDBG program.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we've discussed this project a couple of times here before about trying to decide which project it was we were going to pursue with the fifty-second-year CDBG project. Council's already approved a resolution to pursue this project. As a part of the process, we have to have a public hearing to receive any potential citizen comments on here. I don't think we have anybody signed up. But just to cover and make sure that everybody's aware of what project we're pursuing with this, it's the approximately twelve hundred linear feet of six-foot-wide concrete sidewalk and shared-use path around Memorial Park at the north end of the park. The reason why we're doing only this particular section is because CDBG dollars cannot be spent in a floodway, and everything south of where you see the red line is considered a floodway. So, we're using the CDBG dollars specifically outside of the floodway. As we move forward with capital projects and planning, if we elect to continue that shared-use path, we would have to identify other funding sources, whether that be potential a TIF fund or general fund or whichever else. But the total project cost is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents. We may consider doing this project over two years, meaning that we'll do it in phases. This would be phase one. The middle phase would have to be done separately by the city. And then the south phase that wraps around and connects the civic center by the basketball court, this portion of it over here can be done with the fifty-third-year CDBG dollars that come through. Happy to answer any questions or discuss it as you wish. Yes, that is showing a floodplain.
That's the way Becky just mentioned those that totals to one hundred and seventy thousand.
Yes, ma'am. No, 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 I'm sorry. No, the three, the three phases? Yes. No, that is just this section is only one hundred and seventy thousand. Yes. Sidewalk and concrete have become extraordinary, like everything else, have become extraordinarily expensive. Your standard sidewalk, just for reference, is typically three foot. This is a six-foot wide sidewalk. So, it's a shared-use path like many parks you're seeing. So, it should be wide enough to allow for strollers, passing bicyclists, those kinds of things around the park.
Any questions or comments?
When would they start hiring?
That is a good question. So, this is waiting to be fully approved and funded by County HUD. Typically, that process takes a few months. Once it is funded by HUD, then it will have to go through the bid process, which our engineers will oversee. The bidding process typically takes about a month. And then it would ultimately come back to you to award a contract. That may take another month. So, we're probably about six to seven months away from starting construction on it. So, yeah.
Typical government.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none. The time is six twelve. Our public hearing is closed. Next time's discussion items. Item A, monthly staff reports. First one's Police Department.
Good evening. How you doing? We got a little bit of difference in activity this month. We had a week of snow or ice. But I have to compliment our people. The residents around here paid attention to the weather and really stayed off the ice a lot. That helped us tremendously. So, we ended up being dispatched to seventeen hundred and fifty-three calls for service this month, or the month of January. In with that, we had the typical variety of calls.
The district's not working. We're having technical difficulties tonight, so.
Ah, okay. We ended up with thirteen traffic crashes. Six of them were major. We had four minors and three hit-and-runs.
Hey, Al, they can't hear you.
How's that? Better? Okay. Not used to this thing. We had, we ended up with sixteen alarm calls, ten commercial, and six residential. That was up a little bit. We had two assault calls, one simple assault, one sexual assault. The sexual assault actually ended up occurring in Fort Worth, and the simple assault was unfounded. So, we ended the month with no assaults. We had three assist other agencies this month. We had Tarrant County, Kennedale, and Fort Worth PD. Didn't have to assist Fort Worth this month. We responded to two burglaries in progress and two burglary investigations. And both of them were unfounded, or all four of them were unfounded. So, we ended up with no burglaries this month. We had four criminal trespass, which is down considerably. We did have one deceased person call, twenty disturbance calls, and this time they're evenly split, ten general disturbance and ten domestics, which compared to December, totals down by eighteen. We had four fight calls. All four of them were school-related. We had one at the high school and three at Baxter Middle School. Apparently, that's the place to fight. We had two intoxicated persons. We had, we responded to seven calls involving mentally ill, two missing persons, fifteen parking violations, two prowler calls, six shots fired or fireworks calls. Bear nine, this month began, or January began, starting right after midnight on New Year's Eve. So, we were still getting a few fireworks calls. That also gave us our first DUI arrest of the year. We had one of our major, our first major accident of the year. Car ran off the road, ran over a pole, knocked the pole down, pulled the power lines down, and had an injury in the car. Driver got out and walked away. Didn't go far. He was our first DUI arrest for the year. We had fifteen suspicious persons or vehicles. Breakdown was ten persons and five vehicles. We had eight thefts. That was up a little bit. And we ended up with six arrests for the month. Our traffic enforcement activities resulted in traffic stops that were cleared with citations. Now, again, that could be one citation. It could be multiple citations. The, we had one hundred and fifty-nine citation stops and one hundred and sixteen resulted in warnings. Little update on our staffing. Daquan Ryans is nearing his end of field training. He should be probably within the next ten days completed with field training and released on his own, provided all goes well on, on final testing. We have no indication that there's going to be any problem at all. He has been wonderful all the way through the training. His performance has been outstanding. We're looking forward to getting him on the street. We are still seeking one position, one patrol position that is currently open. Our interview board performed several interviews last week. Came out with a couple of really good, good applicants. They're going into the next phase of background investigation. We've got more interviews coming up this coming Monday. And we're also performing an interview on Friday for a code enforcement officer replacement. Hopefully, we'll have code enforcement back in, in full force here pretty quickly. We're looking for certified experienced code enforcement officers. So, hopefully, the one we've got coming in. A couple more people interested that we're trying to follow up on. But hopefully, we'll get that filled very quickly. I mean, recently, we had our, our annual city gala, the awards gala. And in that, we always highlight the employees of each division and each department that are just above and beyond. And we wanted to take a minute to, to let everybody know that our office, our Rookie of the Year this year was Officer Ryan Quackenbush. Ryan has come to us and just been amazing. He's, he's been serving as a field training officer as well. Great guy, fits in well, and very knowledgeable, and very dedicated. Our Officer of the Year went to Mike Treppa. Anybody that's been around the city very long knows Mike Treppa. Treppa's been, been around this city a long time. He went to school here. He's worked here. He's been in law enforcement for a little over thirty years. And he's been with us for the last five years consecutively. But he'd been here a couple of times before. At the banquet, I refer to him as our boomerang. He's left a couple of times, but he always comes back. And then we had, our Supervisor of the Year is Assistant Chief James Thompson. The purpose of this award is to recognize the supervisor that really goes above and beyond, that just embraces his role. And James Thompson was promoted to Assistant Chief last April. Since that time, he has been concurrently serving as Assistant Chief and immediate supervisor over the Criminal Investigation Division, all while carrying a full investigative load of cases. He's, he's had a plate full. Very appreciative. In addition to the, the of the year awards, we also wanted to recognize Corporal Troy Schroeder and Officer Colby Ray, who were presented the life-saving award. These two officers responded to an unconscious person. They arrived on the scene. They found a drug overdose. They administered Narcan and initiated CPR as well. Medics arrived on the scene. They had them pause CPR. Medics did a quick assessment. They had the officers continue CPR, administer more Narcan. But that time kept this lady alive and gave the medics a chance to get their equipment prepared and take over care. And in a very short amount of time, she was coming back to consciousness and trying to converse. She, she was a definite save. Also recognized for life-saving award was Detective William Morgan. Morgan was on his way to an investigative assignment. He was going down I thirty in Fort Worth and rolled up on a very chaotic scene. What he had rolled up on was a rollover accident where a small toddler had been thrown from the vehicle, and the vehicle had come to rest upside down on the child. As he arrived, four PD officers were pulling the small child from under the car. The, the officers all worked together on CPR on the child and were able to actually get the child back and then deliver him to medics. Child survived. All, all actions worthy of note. We wanted to highlight them and make sure you all are aware. Any questions?
I have a question not related to the monthly summary.
Yes, ma'am.
With the work that's being done right there at the corner of Orstil Drive and what's there, Enon.
Enon.
Have you had any questions?
Actually, our first one was yesterday. We had one. And the issue that we have found is for the northbound side, that they stop at the stop sign as they start to pull forward, they can't see through the barricades to see anybody going east on Enon. We're trying to find out now exactly when that's going to be finished, when the project's going to be done, and that those barricades are going to be gone. We're looking at putting a temporary stop sign a little bit further out for the northbound traffic to hopefully help alleviate that issue. For the most part, people have been reasonably good about it. We have a lot of people that are trying to go around the barricade and continue south. And that, that, that's not allowed right now. It's just, it's hazardous. They just have to go a little bit, a little bit out of their way, go further east on Enon, come down Timberview and come back in Shelby. Just a few minutes of inconvenience to keep everybody safe. Yes. Urban exploring. Anything else?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Animal Services. Please speak into the mic. Speak into the mic. So our people out here can hear you.
Just point your voice for them.
Is it muted? Agreed?
And I have to turn it on. Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, we, January is usually slow. Not this year, even with the ice, we were, we were pretty busy. We took in seventy-six dogs for January. And just to kind of give you a comparison, January is usually our slowest month generally. Last year we took in twenty-six dogs. So we, we took in a lot, a lot of dogs. But because of all the warm weather, you'll see that we took in twenty-eight just here in Everman. That's because we had two litters of puppies. So it's been kind of a weird year with the, with the heat. So the animals are, the dogs and cats have started to produce a little bit early this year. So, so we did take in the seventy-six dogs. We took in eleven cat, or I'm sorry, twelve cats, which last year we took in eleven. So that's, that's pretty normal. Our positive outcomes, we had sixty dogs that were positive outcomes. We had one adoption at the shelter. And even with the snow and not being able to be out there for a week, they got eleven dogs out through the mobile adoption center. We had three dogs that were returned to the owners from the shelter and fourteen that the field officers were able to find their homes and get them back to. And we transferred thirty-one dogs out to rescue groups, which again, that was a lot of those, those two litters of puppies because we don't like to keep those at the shelter. We want to get those out into homes where they can grow up in a safer environment. Our outcome for cats, basically, we sent five out to transfer organizations and we did one TNR last month. On our live release rate for dogs, we are still, since October, we are a hundred percent on all of our healthy adoptable dogs are a hundred percent live release rate. We had thirteen tier-two dogs come in, which are a little bit, a little bit harder to move. But we had eighty-five percent live release rate on those. And we had thirty-two tier-three dogs. And again, some of the puppies are in there because when they're unweaned, there would be a tier-three. But we had fifty-nine percent live release rate even with our very difficult dogs. Our live release for cats, we, all of them were tier-threes that came in. We had eleven of them. We had a forty-six percent live release rate. We received one thousand three hundred and forty-four phone calls, which was about a twenty percent increase from January last year. And in, in the field, we did a hundred and eighty calls. And our field staff has really been stepping up because they're going out now. We're doing more close patrols, so we're being more proactive. So people are seeing us out there. And they're also, they're getting, you know, when we have problem dogs that we are setting traps, you know, and they're taking care of problems. They've been doing an outstanding job doing that. And, and then just specifically for Everman, some of the calls, most of our calls that came here were for loose animals. Over half of them were for loose animals. And then the rest of the charts are just kind of let you know where we're at and how things have increased over, over the time. Any questions or?
I want to know who answers thirteen hundred and forty-four phones.
We do. You know, we haven't set up. It's genius how Mr. Spencer set it up. It, it actually, the phone call comes through and they go to all the cell phones. So we all share the duty. Now, out of those thirteen hundred calls, a lot of them come from other jurisdictions, either the county or Fort Worth. Because we, we answer the phone and they're very happy that we answer the phone. And we can at least direct them to the right, the right location. And I would say, I'd really be curious, I'd love to keep track of it, but of course we can't. But I'd love, really like, but I'm guessing about fifty percent of our calls aren't even in our jurisdictions.
What is special assignment?
Special assignment, that's traps. So when we set a trap, we want to go out, we want to make sure that, you know, the officer's going out there and checking it at least once a day. Because we don't want to leave anything in there. And it's also like close patrols. A lot of times we'll go out and that'll be a special assignment or just if they got, if they have to run and go pick something up, you know, to help the shelter out. Thank you.
Next up's Fire Department.
This is weird. I'm only over there. Other side of the view. Sure. Mayor, Council, how are y'all? So we've got the Fire Department report for calls for service from January fourteenth to current. It's going to be a total of a hundred and fourteen calls. As we discussed last month, unfortunately, we're in the middle of a software update and software shift. There's a lot of data dumps that are happening. And it is creating havoc for not only me, but pretty much every fire department that, that partners with any reporting software, i.e. ESO or, or Firehouse or Red and Max. We're all having the same issues. We're all having the same struggles. So we can't pull all the exact data right now. I don't even have like the call subtypes to be able to tell you, like to run the report and say how many were EMS call, I mean, R call. So I had to manually go through line by line and just pull each report to just double check and see which ones were what. So hopefully, we've got two more online trainings and more online onboarding's with all the data over the next couple of weeks. And so hopefully, we're going to be clearing all that stuff up so I can get to the rest of the data. But as you can see, unfortunately, the call times, the total training hours and the overlapping incidents, I do not have for you. So we will follow up next month with those. My apologies and I can assure you that if I could have stayed with my previous software, we would have. But it's obsolete, it doesn't work anymore. Incident reports, as I said, we did go through there manually so I could at least get this breakdown for you. Had a total of eleven fire type incidents. There were a couple of days where we had some rash of grass fire or brush fire related. As you know, it's been, it's been dry. We're, I think we're on the cusp of a drought. I'm sure that there's a couple counties that have done a burn ban. So I'm sure we're on the edge of one as well. If we don't get some kind of substantial rain. With the winds, that doesn't help. So in low humidity. We did have one in-city fire on the, in the seven hundred block of Shelton Ham. That was a, was a, no fire is, is a good fire. But for the fire department, this was amazing fire. They were on it, they were out of the house fast, they were on scene fast. They were deploying the hose lines quick. I mean, it was light speed. It was, rarely do things go exactly as you want them to go or exactly as you trained for them to go. Because there's always a hit, there's some kind of bump in the road, right? That's just life. This one was one of those ones where it wasn't a bump in the road. Went the way it was supposed to go. The guys actually, it was a home that should have been burned to the ground. Should have, should have took the roof off. And they did a heck of a job. They stopped it. Obviously, it was, it was a total loss in the kitchen and in the dining room of the area. But that was in the opposite end of the house. The bedrooms and all the clothing and the personal possessions and all that on the other side. They did an awesome job. They got a stop before it got to that point. I'll actually, to my wife's chagrin, yes, I put on bunker gear because our lieutenant, Lieutenant Newton, was doing an awesome job, phenomenal job in command of the fire. And so I was looking into it on my entire way into the city. I was actually at home. And so there was no way I was going to, going to rain on his parade. I was going to let him keep it. And so I walked up and just put on my air pack and went in and started fighting fire and pulling ceiling with the rest of the guys. So, but that's, I was, I was third string quarterback there. The rest of the guys did all, all the awesome work at the front end of it. So, but that's what we do. I know it was devastating for them to, to have such damage to the house. But at least they got to get back in there and get their personal possessions. We had a total of eighty-one medical emergencies. Six motor vehicle accidents, which, so we're actually down on, on motor vehicle accidents. That could be because we've been pretty busy. And so there have been a few motor vehicle accidents that had Rendon or Kennedale that have been covering us because we've had one of our incident going on in our city. So, and I don't, I don't put, if another jurisdiction runs it for us, I don't put that into the call status. So hazards conditions is a total seven and then the other call types is nine. Our staffing, our new firefighter, paramedic that we hired in December, he's still an FTO. He's, he's a green, he's a new, very, very fresh mindset. So we want to make sure that we set him up for success and we don't want to release him from FTO prematurely. So he's, he is, he's grasping everything. Everything's going as, as we hoped it would, but we don't want to release him just yet. So he's getting there. We do, unfortunately, sadly, I've got two personnel currently out on FMLA for, for personal medical reasons. Hopefully, one of them will be coming back shortly. But any time we've got staffing, the limited staffing that we currently have, that means technically we're down three. And so that really, really, really hurts. And then I got really, really unfortunate news. Today, I got an email with, with one of our personnel. That will put us down, so we'll be, we will have one open position. Unfortunately, it was a firefighter paramedic that gave his notice. So that, that definitely hurts. So I'll, I'll say that, and it's not, the city manager, finance director, everybody, all of the executive and all of y'all, everybody here does all they can to, to ensure that we pay our employees to the best of our ability and to our, and to the constraints of our budget. But it doesn't change the fact that there are numerous departments that pay substantially higher. And so he did cite that in his resignation of, just due to financial burden, he's going to, he had to go find another job elsewhere. Other updates, we've got the pneumatic. Luckily, we finally got all the, all little, little things ironed out with the, the outfitter with Sutton's Barn. So it should arrive to us. Actually, everything's done on Wednesday, Thursday. So next. I have it here to, to show you. It, it definitely, it shines. I like it. It's a good one. I put it on here, the ISO announcement. Obviously, that's a, that's going to be the agenda item. So I will forego that one until that comes back up. And then I'll come back up and answer any questions that you've got associated with that. And then last is, as I mentioned at the last report, I had the Texas Department of State Health Services and Texas Commission on Fire Protection compliance inspections with both of the inspectors. The EMS one, it's been about seven years since we had an inspection, six or seven. So that one was one of those really, really sweating. They, obviously during COVID times, they, they transitioned a lot of their stuff to, to just making sure paperwork was good and they didn't do any onsite stuff. We came through, flying colors, zero violations. We had one minor deficiency on the EMS side. That was actually cleared up before he even left. It was a, an issue that for some reason, our EMS license was getting sent to a different email box than it was to mine. So we didn't have anyone to print off. And that was, that was an issue that Austin had. They didn't reassign, they didn't reassign the email addresses that it should have gone to. So that was, he has to put it out as a deficiency, but that's not our deficiency. They didn't, they didn't fix that on our end. So, but other than that, we are good. So, any questions?
Regarding personnel, do you have part-time employees or do you still have volunteer volunteers?
So we've got three part-time currently. The issue that we run into is to get a part-time firefighter, paramedic onboard and through FTOs. Like as the full-time employee, where you're here every single shift, you know, from forty-eight hours and off for ninety-six, so you're working five tours or ten tours a month. You're, and it still takes you two to three months. So to put that in perspective with a part-timer who would work maybe one pay period, one, one duty period during a pay period, it'll take like six, eight, ten months to get them through FTO as a paramedic. So it's really, really hard for us to have. And those are the ones that are, that really hurts us when we lose a firefighter medic. And that's where there's now, well, three, one, one of the firefighter medics is, is on FMLA. The one that is an FTO and then the one that gave his notice, so.
These are medics.
Yes, yes. So unfortunately, even if I had ten part-time, I still don't fill those. Firefighter ENTs, they wouldn't fill the firefighter medic shoes. So I do have one part-time firefighter, firefighter medic. And he's really great about helping us out at night and on the weekends. He works full-time at Cook's. And we've already put a phone call to him of like, put him on speed dial. So, but we're actively recruiting currently. We did have one individual that turned down. He, we gave him a part-time job offer last month. He is a firefighter, paramedic. We gave him a part-time job offer because we were full on, on the firefighter medic positions. And he turned it down. I reached out to him today because I'm assuming that he turned it down because he's looking for a full-time employment. And so hopeful that I get a phone call back from him because he was a great candidate. And so hopefully that's going to be a quick turnaround. But as I said, it's going to take two to three months after they're, they're brought on just to get them through FTO. So it's going to be, it's going to be a tough three, four, five months for us. So mark my words, unfortunately, I will never put on my staff report that we're full-staffed. Never again. Ever again. Not jinxing myself. Ever again. I don't want to say those words either. Any other questions?
Next up is Public Works. Okay Gilbert, talking to the mic. You're kind of quiet to begin with, so.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you guys doing today? I just want to give you an update for the past month. It's been kind of crazy with the winter storm and all that nice ice we received. But the guys were busy. They were making sure everything was winterized, all the buildings. We were even able to turn off the water for some, some of the areas, like the parks, to make sure none of the lines broke in there. And little things like that to make sure we don't have extra work to do as these things happen. But also on top of that, the guys were able to do eleven signs and two potholes. If you look at there, one of those pictures is mainly there on Christopher that got taken care of or all those signs there. But also on our parks, on the bathrooms, you can see there's a couple of artists that were doing some type of markings there. And we were able to remove that out of those stalls. But you see there on West Area was one of the biggest or one of the bigger projects we had for a while. And we were able to accomplish it this, this past month, was to cut out that really bad area there on West Area on that corner. I didn't believe we had that for maybe over than six months. We knew we had to do it, but it was so busy. But we were able to do it this past month. As you see there, it looks really nice and better than what it was at first. So our guys in the department have been busy. They were also able to do the city hall letters there at City Hall. And if you look to your left side on City Hall, you'll be able to see they're nice and straight. We made sure that, that was done. And that was part of Rudy and Fernando did a great, great job on that as well. On the water side, it's also been quite busy. Winter ice, all the well lots, making sure, and all those pipes were bust specifically because we need our water. And this winter storm was great. I mean, there was nothing that actually happened. We were able to maintain our water levels and our pressure in our system. So everybody had water within that bad storm that we had. As you see there, part of our program that we're running now is to make sure all our hydrants are working. And we, we had the guys be able to put a hydrant here on Thomas Place. Thompson, Thompson and they were able to put, put that hydrant in there. There's a couple of pictures there, just going to show you what the guys were doing. We had a couple of water mains. And we see the guys there. It is kind of cold, but I guess they were warm already and they took their jackets off. But they were able to accomplish the job. There's a couple of breaks that they were able to do. Some of those cases, as you see in the last picture, you just have to get in there. You don't know where you're looking at, but you go ahead and put that clamp on without even, your hands become your eyes, so you can see that. To be able to, to complete that job. But other than that, Council, Mayor, that's the update for the month.
How do you tell when it's time to replace the water?
If it's hard to open or if you see it leaking. I know we have a lot of less that we wanted to replace as well. So that's also on our program to be replaced.
And Gilbert, I appreciate the sign being straight. Because you'd been the first one I'd have called if they hadn't been.
Yes sir. Looks good, sir.
Next item, item B, staff briefing and discussion related to Everman Water Utility Delivery System Improvements, Expansion and Potential Connections to the City of Fort Worth System and Consideration of Current and Future Developments.
Okay, so we have had significant discussions as you're aware. We just came last month with kind of an urgent resolution asking Council to pass approving three hundred thousand dollars for the replacement of the high school storage tank. That issue combined with another issue that we're going to discuss in executive session raised some concern about the reliability of our current system and what our planning is going forward to ensure that we can continue to deliver water to our, our citizens without having to come back to you with emergencies. So we requested a meeting with the city engineer. So we requested a meeting with the city engineer to kind of explore some potential options for us. And we've identified two projects that we are looking to pursue. Project one, can you put the PowerPoint up for me? If you don't mind sharing it so they can see. Project one is a project that we are pursuing that our city engineers at TMP have identified grant opportunities for. So we are currently working very diligently to apply for these grants. There's a lot of federal funding that has become available to address utility issues, water utility issues that we qualify for. So Gilbert, Evelyn, they're working right now to gather the information in conjunction with our city engineer to, to complete the necessary steps to apply for this grant. This grant, what we are looking to do is update every single one of our pump houses. All of our pump houses need some, some update work, not necessarily with the electrical. As you recall, back with CARES Act funds and American Rescue Plan funds, we, we spent a lot of that funding on electrical upgrades at each one of our sites. We have chemical lines that need to be replaced, storage buildings that need to be replaced, those kinds of things as well at these sites. We're looking to replace the existing storage tanks or repair them if they can be repaired, but, but primarily replace them. The question that came up as a part of this is, does the $300,000 that council just approved to replace the high school water tank qualify as a part of the grant? And the answer to that question is yes. So what we are pursuing now is we are still moving forward with that emergency replacement, trying to get it replaced. But there may be the potential that we get grant funding to replace that funding for us. So we won't have to pull those funds out of water reserves. Additionally, looking to purchase and install backup generators at our sites, which is a TCEQ requirement. However, that's about a $500,000 investment that has had to have been postponed due to budget circumstances. So those are the, the primary projects that we've identified as a part of this grant project. We don't know the full cost yet. I would estimate we're somewhere around $2 million if I had to guess right now. But our engineers are working on identifying these projects and putting an opinion of probable cost together for you to review. These projects would be 100% funded by grants if we get those grants awarded. The second project is a connection to the city of Fort Worth. We currently have a connection to the city of Fort Worth Water System, which is an emergency connection. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, we have had to use that connection increasingly as we have issues that arise with our water system. If we have two pumps that go down simultaneously, particularly in the summertime, we have to tap the Fort Worth Water System to be able to supplement our water system. What the city of Fort Worth requires for us to have a permanent connection to them and to meet the TCEQ supply standards is that we have a separate connection aside from the existing emergency connection that puts that water into a storage tank. The best location that we've been able to, and, and trust me, we have been round and round and round on this project for about a year now with the city of Fort Worth. The most feasible, both as far as project scope and financial scope, is to install a new water line along Enon Avenue from Oak Grove Road to the police department water station where there's a storage tank, a brand-new 200,000? 200,000 gallon storage tank behind the police department. That would be a metered connection and would cost approximately $3 million to fund. The funding source for this, there are, there are no grants that would fund this because the city of Fort Worth is on a storm, I'm sorry, is on a surface water system. The city of Everman is on a well water system. So we pull our waters from the Paluxi and the Trinity Wells. One of the concerns we've got as we have been talking with our engineers, and the mayor was included in this last meeting, is we are seeing great production from the Trinity Wells, but we are seeing a ever-decreasing amount of production from our Paluxi Wells. If you're, if you're not aware, water from the Aquifers is increasingly becoming a concern statewide. There is a big push from the state for governments to get off of well water because they are concerned about long-term usage of the Aquifers and whether the Aquifers will continue to be able to provide enough water for our systems. So doing this will provide a lot of resilience for our water system, giving us both a surface water connection as well as a well water connection. We are not proposing that we go exclusively with the city of Fort Worth, and I would never propose that to you. The city of Fort Worth connection would be a supplemental connection to our existing wells and pumps. Because the Paluxi Wells that we're tapping are ever-decreasing in volume, I do not recommend that we spend any more dollars on, or invest any more dollars in repairing those particular wells that we focus on all of our Trinity Wells, which is a recommendation that's coming directly from the engineers. We're, we're wasting dollars or putting a lot of money in to these Paluxi well sites and not getting very much out of it. The money would be better spent getting a supplement connection to the city of Fort Worth Stormwater System. Unfortunately, there's no grant that will fund this because they don't fund a mixing system like this. They don't fund a switch to a system. So this particular project would have to rely upon a debt service of some type. Currently, we're working on pursuing a Texas Water Development Board loan, similar to what we've done before on water projects. In pursuit of those, what the, what the state revolving fund will do is they will typically grant you a certain amount back. But it's, it's very nominal. I think it's 200 or $300,000 off of the, the project, project this size, which is still great. I mean, that's, that's a good chunk of money, but it's not going to fund the whole project. So the remaining, you know, 2.7, 2.8 million dollars that this project would cost would have to be on a capital outlay through a loan such as a 20 or 30-year term loan. So those are the two things that we're working on. I wanted to put it on your radar kind of early as we continue these conversations. Our staff is working to get the necessary paperwork to submit for the grants on the first projects that I mentioned to get our current well systems fully updated. I do want to be clear that there's no risk of our water system. I don't, there's no, there's no danger or anything like that. We're just trying to plan for the future and plan for future expansion. And as we continue to have developments coming into Everman, we continue to have new connections coming into Everman, we need to be thinking about, you know, five and 10 years down the road, how are we gonna do this? So I'll be happy to answer any questions or call Gilbert up to throw him under the bus, whatever you would like to do.
Which wells were you referring to regarding that replacement or repair?
Can you throw the, throw the first slide back up if you can? That one. Okay, so this is a photo of our high school storage tank. Each one of these tanks stores water from two pumps. One pump hits the Trinity Well, the other pump hits the Paluxi Well. So we've got two pumps at every single one of our stations that pump the water up and put them into that storage tank right there. That building to the right that you see, those are our pump houses where a lot of the treatment may occur or a lot of the electrical equipment that manages the pumps is housed. At each one of those sites, since we tap both the Trinity Well and the Paluxi Well, our focus is going forward, going to be on maintaining and improving all the Trinity Well pumps at each one of the sites. So each site we will still maintain. We're just suggesting that we don't fund or any significant funding towards maintenance on the Paluxi Wells as we, as we move forward, if that makes sense.
So if the well pump goes out, you're not going to replace it on the Paluxi side?
I'm not gonna say that we're not going to, it depends. If, if we're looking to, and it becomes feasible for us to go forward with Fort Worth connection as a supplement, we would likely not replace it then. If something was to happen today, then we would have to address what our volume capacity is and Gilbert would have to make a, make a decision or a recommendation to you on whether we look to fix it or not. But I think as far as capital planning, I don't think we plan to spend any more dollars on our Paluxi Wells. Am I right in saying that, Gilbert? Yeah.
So how soon would you know? Are we talking about this year or next year or?
Well, so we're, we're working on the paperwork now. As with everything federal, very slow. We have to submit the project identification forms, the PIF forms, by the middle of March in order for the project to even be considered. And then, once they review it, if those PIF forms are approved, then they are going to extend us an invitation to apply for the grant. So then we will have to go through the actual application process to apply for the grant. After applying for the grant, if funded, it would likely be funded with a federal budget cycle, which typically runs January to December of every year and would follow the next budget cycle. So even if it was to move lightning speed and we were to get the funding and application and grant approved this year, it would likely not be funded until Jan, until after January of 2027, when we could begin the, the project on the grants. The Texas Water Development Board project, if we were to pursue that, that one moves a little faster because there is not a specific timeline on that. As it is a year-round state revolving fund, it's a loan. There are some notice requirements and things that we would have to comply with. It's, it's very similar to taking out a bond and the fact that we would have some public, public postings that would have to be required, some public hearings, those, those typical debt service type, type actions. But we could probably achieve that in 60 to 90 days. And then however long it takes Texas Water Development Board to process it from their side. July, I'm sorry, July, okay.
Is this one of those matching funding?
The first one is not. The first one is a fully funded grant opportunity. So we would look to have all of this fully funded from federal grants, which would fix our current sites. The second one involving the connection to Fort Worth is not a matching grant. It is a loan where essentially they forgive a, a small percentage of that loan back as a grant. They call it a grant, but really it's a, it's a loan forgiveness is what I would call it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so next item, item C, staff briefing and discussion related to the new animal shelter project located at 101 East Enon Avenue.
Okay, we are really excited about this one. We finally got the lease executed and we're, we're ready to move forward with it. Do you mind putting that slideshow up again, sorry? So we have been working to put together a draft floor plan. This is what that, that floor plan looks like. And I know it's on a small screen, a screen far away from you, so you can't read all of the details. But this space will provide 6,000 square foot of office space, which will allow for significant room for indoor cat kennels, catsick, cat quarantine, intake, ACO offices, a conference training room, break room, IT room, interior bathrooms, everything in there that's, that's needed. Meet and greet opportunities. It provides for a warehouse space on the west side of the building where our animal control officers, when they capture an animal, can actually pull into the shelter securely and offload an animal without risk of that animal escaping, which unfortunately does happen. I mean, some of these, some of these guys fight. They don't, they don't wanna be in custody, so they're gonna fight, they're gonna resist arrest. It, the, provides a, a separate space for a dog quarantine that's ample and then a dog holding that is gonna be ample space for us to be able to put 20-plus, 20-plus kennels inside. Separate bathing area, medical room, bathrooms. This is, this is a huge, huge upgrade for us and we're really, really excited about it. The building does require some renovations in order for us to be able to operate out of there, which I know we discussed that previously. So we have gone ahead and published an RFQ and an RFP for a design-build firm. We are having a pre-construction meeting. Can you shoot forward to the next slide? One more, oh, okay. Go, go back one, sorry, I was going out of order. Okay, here's our concept of the outside. Tarrant County has been gracious enough and Commissioner Miles' office has been gracious enough to offer to repave the front parking lot for us. So their staff is gonna come in and take care of that parking lot for us. We're working with a local business owner now on getting the dog runs there on the east side of the building for an outdoor space for the dogs. Next slide, if you don't mind? This is just an AI-generated concept idea of the color scheme. We want it, we want it bright and loud and obnoxious because we want people to see it and we want people to wanna stop by there and come visit. We think this is, this is actually a very beautiful color scheme. We're, we're hopeful that it's bright and attracts people to come by and see the animals and hopefully take one or 10 with them. Next one for me? So that RFQ has been published, our published date was February 6th. We have a non-mandatory pre-submission meeting this Friday where contractors or potential companies can come in and, and meet with staff and we'll conduct a walkthrough of the facility and talk about what our needs are. Our focus with this RFP and design-build because we, we are looking to have to fund this separately. Funding has not been secured for this just yet. We'll come back and have that conversation at a later date, once we've, we've got an idea of what the cost is gonna be. But we're focusing primarily on the kennel spaces, not office renovation. All the office renovation work, we're looking to keep in-house and do all that ourselves through some great volunteer efforts of our staff and then some of our public works expertise from those guys over there. The RFP submissions will be due back on February 23rd by 5:00 PM. We'll have our interviews with the finalists later that week and should have a firm selection and notice to the respondents by March 2nd. It will come back to you on the March council meeting for final approval of the selection that staff picks. So although we'll make that selection, ultimately it's your decision at the end on which firm to select. The design-build contract would be contingent upon funding, meaning that there's no dollars being spent on this process as it is right now. We would work with them and then once we identify funding to be able to pay for design and things, then we would get moving forward on, on everything else. But we, we've got a couple avenues that we're working on right now through TIF and, and our partner cities on, on funding this to try to make it happen. Our anticipated cost, and this is just anticipated, for those portions of the building is about $500,000 is what we're trying to secure for this. But as it stands right now, we're not asking council for any allocation of funds currently, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'm, I'm really excited for our ACO staff. This is, this is very much needed. And I know they're real excited. They've already been over there picking out colors and talking about, talking about decorations. So I know they're real, real fired up about it. Any questions?
How are you possibly looking to fund it?
So a couple of different options. We are in conversation now with the city managers of the three partner cities that we work with to identify potential funding sources that their cities may have, such as CDC, TIF, if they have any alternatives, to be able to split the cost between the four cities. We do have a TIF fund that we are looking at. We did pursue a grant opportunity. However, that grant opportunity did not prove to be very fruitful for us, unfortunately. At least yet. It, it, it might be, as well as a, some public-private partnerships that we're trying to identify.
Good job on all that work.
Any other questions or comments? Next item, item D, staff briefing, Black Mountain Data Center Development in Fort Worth.
Okay, so I know this one was an item of concern that we wanted to bring before you. The city of Fort Worth is currently having their council meeting right now on a zoning change for the property located at the intersection of Anglin and Anglin, I'm sorry, Anglin and Enon Avenue in conjunction with the Black Mountain Data Center. A lot of concerns have been voiced regarding the data center. And we requested last month that they postpone a decision on that zoning change until we've had an opportunity to meet with the developers. We did get that opportunity and met with them just this past week. Mayor was on the call, I was there, the city of Forest Hill city manager was there and Mayor Boardingham from Forest Hill was there to kinda grill them. And we, we grilled them pretty good on some of the concerns. If you don't mind sliding through these slides here real quick. Total acreage for where they're looking to rezone is 39.3 acres at that intersection. Shoot on down to the next slide. This is their presentation, so I just put it in here so you can see it. Here's where that's currently located. If you're, if you, if you recall, in December, the city, this city council approved a joint ordinance to change Enon Road where it's currently the city of Fort Worth, from the city of Fort Worth to the city of Everman. That joint ordinance is going before Fort Worth on March the 10th. This is right there on that frontage, right where it goes from Enon to Anglin Drive. Next slide. Shoot down, keep going. One more. Sorry, we had technical difficulties, so we had to. Sorry. We had technical difficulties, so we had to mess with the projections here. This is the overall project. It is a massive project, over 500 acres of development that are occurring on both sides of Forest Hill Drive. We had, when we had the conversations with them, we talked about some of the concerns that were shared with us, starting with the traffic impact. The traffic impact concern was addressed and they are looking to staff a total of 300 people at this location, split up amongst three different shifts. So we're talking about 60 to 70 employees across this whole site at any one given time. So that particular traffic impact as far as operations, very, very minimal, going to be less than adding one school in that area. So as far as operationally, there's going to be next to no traffic impact coming from this development. However, construction of this development is going to be extremely chaotic and extremely problematic. The one thing that I would say and that we talked about is that this property is going to be developed into something. Previously, it was approved to be developed into a trailer park that was going to house close to 1,500 trailers. The construction of that was going to be equally as messy. It doesn't really matter what's going to go in here. Whatever it is, the construction of it is going to be messy. Construction period of any development is going to be bad. So regardless of whatever it is they choose to develop here, whether it is the data center or any other development, there's going to be that traffic concern.
What is, sorry, what is Forest Hill up there?
This is Forest Hill Drive that was right here. This is the uplift academy right here. This is Long Stevenson. It runs across the top of the booth. You see on the left side of Forest Hill Drive that runs up and down, that green is north of the trailer park. So they're looking to develop all of this all the way down to Enon as a part of that.
Okay, so the.
Even at the top, across from the ballpark.
This is where they're looking to put some storage.
Okay, that little park that's open, is that Royal Crest that's open, over?
Over here, yes. This is Royal Crest. Yep, yep. So this is where Columbine was here in December, because that vacant land is north of that and then you jump over to Royal Crest right there.
So as far as traffic is concerned, we kind of conceded, it doesn't really matter what gets built there. Whatever's going to get built there is going to be messy during construction. Doesn't matter what it is.
One question. What the green is, does that go all the way over to Wichita?
Yes, it does. No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're talking about the green on the north side, on the left side of Forest Hill Drive? It goes, it backs right up to English Isles. It stops in line with where English Isles currently stops. So that is.
So this green right here is Royce Brook's. This is Booty. This is where that electrical oozing is, like north of Booty. And this is where the Hannah Ranch development, this is what's built, the vacant Hannah Ranch, that's where it's at. So not quite to Wichita, this is Wichita.
Is there any way you can share that picture with us?
Yes, so I'll send you this whole presentation. He got it to me just a little bit ago when I asked him for some exhibits to show you. This is what's being presented to them tonight. The next big concern that we shared was flooding, which is another concern that we've all got, always have had, is, you can keep it on that map if you don't mind. Flooding concern, as you can see on that map right there, the white that kind of separates the grain there, that is the regulatory floodway. What we asked of them is the same thing that we asked the previous developer that was building the trailer park. Would you consider doing a public-private partnership with the city of Everman to perform flood mitigation projects as a part of your development? They have verbally committed to that and said, yes, they would. Now, that's a verbal commitment, so unfortunately can't at this stage. There's not a whole lot that we can, we can't force anything at this stage with zoning. But when it comes to replat, we can at that point enter into a development agreement to do it. But I will tell you, they were very open to it. They were very receptive to our concerns. They understood the concerns. We explained that this project is downstream slightly of some of our major flooding concerns. We've got some projects identified already in here. Would you consider partnering with us to ensure that these projects are done? And even similar to what we did with the project over here, would you hold more water back than what's required to help us? And they've been very open to that, very receptive. The feeling that I got, and American attest to how he felt, is they did seemingly want to be good partners and want to work with us. So I did get a good vibe, if that makes sense, for what that's worth. Vibes don't carry any weight in court, but I got a good vibe from it. So they were willing to address the flooding issues. Another concern that we have that is not really so much a concern with the developer as it is with the city of Fort Worth is that this project will have to pay to the city of Fort Worth transportation impact dollars. Our concern that we voiced with the developer and have partnered with the developer on to voice back to the city of Fort Worth is we want to make sure that the transportation development dollars that they have to spend on this project to the city of Fort Worth get spent in the immediate vicinity of this project. In other words, Forest Hill Drive has already been federally funded. We know that the city of Fort Worth won't have to take those transportation impact dollars and spend a dime of it on Forest Hill Drive. We don't want those dollars to get spent somewhere else in the region. We want it to stay right here to improve all of the connections to the best of their ability because of this development. So they have agreed to stand with us on that and have voiced that back to the city of Fort Worth as well. Other concerns that have been voiced are, and some things to kind of clarify the rumors. This is a data center. It is AI and a credit card data center. This is not a Bitcoin mining data center. A lot of news articles are out about Bitcoin mining. I'm pretty tech savvy, but I don't understand why it creates so much noise to make fake money, but apparently it does. So Bitcoin mining centers, those data centers are very loud and create a lot of noise and a lot of noise pollution and have been cited as causing health concerns for nearby neighbors. That is not what this data center is. This data center is very similar to the data center that is up by Alliance, which generates next to no noise whatsoever. So there is already an existing comparable data center up on the north side of Fort Worth, up by the Alliance Airport, that is a Facebook meta-data center. They've invited people to go stand outside of it, see if you can hear anything. You can't hear anything. So you're not getting those loud and hums and things that you get from a Bitcoin mining facility. So the health concerns from the noise pollution were pretty much destroyed based on that. So we don't have any concern there. Can you slide back up to the? Oh, sure. Yep, it's up.
The white part, what is that?
That's the floodway. That's the regulatory floodway. That's where our flood zone.
Okay, but before you leave.
Yep.
Under that, what is the black grid section in the lower right?
So the black grid in the lower right and the black grid on the top right are the two zoning cases they're hearing right now.
What does that mean?
That means they've applied to change the zoning on those two places and the Fort Worth City Council is considering those in their meeting right now.
Okay, what are they changing them from and to?
Bottom left has a couple. Part of it is residential. The majority of it is agricultural. The top right, I don't know, to be honest with you. But they're looking to change them from those to light industrial. Yes, ma'am. Can you go back to that first slide that's got the black in the background? It's got the rendering. We asked them about appearance because that's always a concern. What is this thing going to look like as we're driving down the road? Is it going to be this big, obnoxious, obtrusive building? They have told us that they have asked for 100-foot setbacks, which is pretty enormous. It's a pretty high setback. So these will be set pretty far back from the roadway. Because they are credit card and AI data centers, as you can imagine, the security in a facility like that has to be very high. So they will have wrought iron fencing all the way around them that is highly secure, high fence. So it's not going to be extremely ugly or obtrusive with significant landscaping. This is the rendering that he provided for us. Again, keep in mind, this is a zoning change request. This is the first step in any development. Although I didn't get this feeling from the developer, at this point, a developer can tell you anything they want and it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be what comes to fruition. Where the rubber really meets the road on developments is through the plating process. They will have to go through a major replat and as a part of that major replat, they will have to produce a site plan. They will have to comply with the setbacks. They will have to comply with the noise and site barriers. Landscaping will have to be identified as a part of that replat. So a lot of this stuff really gets ironed out in the replating phase.
But that's Fort Worth.
It is Fort Worth, but it is a public process. So similar to how the zoning is now, we would be able to, I guess, participate in that process, very similar to how we're participating now. I will tell you, so what I have expressed to Councilman Nettles is that if this project was before this city council, the staff recommendation for a zoning change as it is presented and after meeting with them would be a recommendation for approval. We would recommend to approve a zoning change as it's currently presented. However, I would say that we need to continue to be cautiously optimistic on it and stay in the loop. Black Mountain has agreed to keep us in the loop. Bob Riley, who's the representative with them, has agreed to keep us informed every step of the way. And I think when the replating phase comes across is when we really need to take a close eye at this and either voice our support or opposition for a replat, if that makes sense. In other words, if this zoning gets approved, this isn't the last stop. It still has to go through a replat. A replat is where we're going to get a lot more information about exactly where the buildings are going to be laid, air conditioning is going to be cited, roadway expansions, fencing, all that stuff really comes out in a replat. As part of a rezoning, that's typically not where this stuff kind of comes out in the wash.
So are we talking about a couple of years from now?
We're talking about, this is probably still five to seven years out from construction.
So will they, would they fix Forest Hill Drive by then?
Lord, I hope so. Yes, we talked about that. We talked about how our request would be depending on timing of construction, because I brought that up. Is that the last thing we want is everybody around here, everybody in Everman, every single one of you is experiencing construction fatigue, so tired of construction, you can't go anywhere in the city right now without seeing construction and that it would be ideal for us to be able to complete Wichita and Forest Hill Drive prior to this project going under construction. There's pros and cons to that. The pro is at least that would alleviate some of the backup. The con to it is, do we really want a lot of this heavy construction happening and these construction vehicles coming in on our brand new roadways? So there's pros and cons to each that we talked about. So we're going to have to keep that communication ongoing. What I will tell you is, it was a very good conversation. They were very open. They were very responsive. I got a good feeling from the conversation and Fort Worth is very likely to pass this tonight at council. So I think we just need to stay in good communication with Black Mountain and stay as involved in the process as we possibly can.
Well, I agree. They want our support. They want us to feel good about it and approve it. They want Forest Hill to also. So I think they're going to do whatever they have to to kind of make us happy with the whole process, even though we don't have a lot of teeth in the game, but.
Is the animal shelter a part of that?
I tried to get them to buy it. But it does butt directly up to our current existing animal shelter. But we, it's not in the scope of their development. But I did pitch it to them.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, next item, item D, discussion and consideration of an annual Cinco de Mayo event.
All right, so we've talked about this for, I don't know, every year. And then we talk about it as staff and we have our directors meetings. Hey, we need to do something for Cinco de Mayo and it never seems to come to fruition. Next thing we know, it's like April or May and it's like, well, crud, it's too late to do anything now. So we talked about it at our last director's meeting and put it to a vote and we said, yep, we would like to do this. So we're bringing it to you for kind of a consensus. Would you like to do an annual Cinco de Mayo event for the city? I'll tell you, I'm a little hesitant to ask because it never fails. It's always the same two or three that are really working our tails off to make sure these events happen. But I think it's very fruitful for us to be able to do something and we don't do anything for Cinco de Mayo. 50% of our population is Hispanic and celebrates this holiday. Would probably be beneficial for us to do something. So the first question is, is there a general consensus amongst council to do something?
Is this going to be funded by the city? I mean.
We would do this event like we do any other event and it would be funded exclusively through sponsorships. So we would seek out business sponsorships for the events. We are not asking for city council to allocate general fund dollars for the event.
Not we can celebrate America for Christmas, it's going to be simplified.
We don't want to start huge. We're going to start small and I'm sure, just like Celebrate America has and Christmas has, as we go, it'll continue to grow bigger and bigger each year. But we're going to start small. If the consensus is yes, our thought was this year, we would do it for a four-hour block from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM here at Clyde Pinnon Park on the main stage, include vendors, food trucks, bounce houses. We do, we have already had some conversations trying to see if we could get some vocal orco dance, did I say that right? Yes. I'm not going to try it twice. But we're going to get those dancers to participate, some Aztec dancers, a DJ, piñatas, those kind of traditional Cinco de Mayo festivities here in the park. The cost for this would be minimal. We believe that we could get it funded through business sponsorships of the event. The dancers have, that we've had conversations with, have agreed to do it based on a donation agreement. So as long as we're able to donate something to their program, they would love to come out and participate. And we've got some donations as well. I believe the DJs either offering to do it for free or low cost and then some minor decorations would be the expenses we would have to get covered from those sponsorships.
Can we do a tamale cook-off and I'm sure we could have some volunteers to judge. Randy?
Tamale cook-off sounds good.
What were you going to say, Randy? I didn't hear you. I wanted to hear that comment.
Our event is in June?
Yes, Celebrate America is at the end of June. It's usually the last Saturday in June. Yeah. So it'll, one of the other reasons why we want to simplify this is because we know about a month and a half, two months later, we're going to be real busy with June. Yep. We talked about doing something for Hispanic Heritage Month, which is at a different time of the year. But if we were to do that, we would be competing with Forest Hill, who does a pretty good Hispanic Heritage Festival at their city. So we didn't want to compete with them.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
No comments or no?
No comment.
Okay, next item, item F, discussion and consideration of scheduling a mid-year budget workshop with staff.
So this came up last council meeting. Councilwoman Sanders brought up a desire to have these conversations and we talked about scheduling a mid-year budget workshop so all staff can come in. You guys can grill them and fry them how you want. Now we just need to talk about when you would like to do that. March is mid-year, but I'm going to tell you, we have auditors that will also be here March 9th through April 1st. So we talked about that at the six-month point. Six-month point is March. Would you guys like to do this like the first week of March? Or if not the first week of March, I would say let's push it back to maybe the first week of April?
How about the first week of May? How about the first week of May?
Well, when we get into May, we're going to be getting really close to starting budget season. Staff will start budget season in April.
Okay. Okay, but it won't be at mid-year March. You guys are being audited. We are being audited. And your mind is somewhere else and you're not going to stop and come talk to council and answer all our questions over here when your heart and your head is over here. And May is after April, duh, but yes, it's just in front of budget, but it might be a good time for us to ask those questions. questions as you go into preparing the next budget. Now, I'm just thinking timing like that. Doesn't have to be May. I'm just trying to get away from March. Okay. But no earlier than May.
No, no.
Okay, okay. I'm all right with that. I'm just trying to get away from March. So we're talking about scheduling a meeting with council at the same time to come in to talk to...
Similar to a budget workshop.
Okay. Those are the words I'm looking for. Do it.
Well, it would be, it would be a budget workshop. Well, and that's the next question. I mean, do you all want to do it during the day? Like we do with our expense workshop? When we do our expenditures, we usually block off at least a four-hour block, and we plan an afternoon and have lunch. Is that what you want to do here? Do we need four hours? Do we need just two hours? How much time would you like to allocate? And what all do you want to drill that into?
Yeah. I think two hours is fine. I think two hours.
Because we're going to be through at two hours. I mean, the lunch would be nice, but no.
Well, yes, but...
Yeah, but staff has already been here all day long.
As you can see, we have half of our directors here anyway. So it's, whenever you would like to schedule it, you just...
That's fine, hey. Yeah, I'm okay with you.
What about the ones at work?
I mean, we'll just have to know ahead of time so we can put it on the calendar.
If it's during invoice, then I'm not going to be here. So it just depends on how my calendar falls at work.
Depending on what time, time of day.
Yeah, and what day as well. Because usually our Mondays and...
Oh, please don't do it on a Monday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are busier for us. So, Wednesday or Friday.
Can everyone just go back to their calendars, their work calendars, and kind of give us an idea?
Around that, in mid-April.
Around mid-April.
Because y'all are off on Fridays.
That's right, they're off.
Friday would be a good day.
Friday is a good day. Friday would work better.
It's not a problem for staff. Don't worry about staff. We'll be here whenever you schedule it. So it's okay. We'll make up for it somewhere else in the week.
I forgot they don't work on Friday.
That's okay. Seriously, we'll accommodate, and we'll figure it out. We'll make up for it on Monday or something. It's okay. I promise. Staff doesn't mind, I promise.
So you want to get dates from the three that work, and then the next meeting will set a date in April? Does that sound good?
Are you not good on Friday? Are you not good on Friday?
Who, me?
She's good.
I can go any day.
So you wanted to do it up in the day, correct?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever I want to do. But it'd be nice to do it during the day, kind of get it out of the way.
Yeah.
Well, let's just plan it on during the day and then I'll take my schedule.
Maybe after lunch or something. Maybe like after lunch or something?
Well, what about a Wednesday for y'all? Johnny and... A Wednesday.
What time are we talking about?
After lunch.
For how long?
Two hours. Does that work for you, Carolyn?
I'll have to check. So Wednesday would be April 15th.
Tax Day.
Friday is the 17th.
We need to bring desserts.
Yes. Chocolate, we need chocolate. Tax Day.
I want to get that.
I'll just put out a list.
Okay. We in agreement on how we're going to handle this?
It's going to be either the 15th through 17th, two hours after lunch. And I'll look at my calendar.
Yes. Thank you.
You'll just let Mindy know. We'll get it in.
I'm going to let you know.
And we'll get it in the books.
That's funny. All that work.
Yep, just let Mindy know. We'll get it in the books.
Next item, item G, discussion related to the potential development and implementation of a hazard pay policy for city employees.
Okay, so we had this occur for this last winter storm. And if you recall, during the previous winter storm, we approved a hazard pay policy that compensated employees who came into work during the winter storm a little bit extra for being, putting themselves through the risk. We had a lot of staff that really got out and drove or ended up staying the night, both that winter storm and this most recent storm. This most recent storm, we had several dispatchers, a couple of police officers, several firefighters who really just took up residence at the office. We had people sleeping in recliners, sleeping on the floor, sleeping on cots throughout the entirety for several days, showering at the police departments, ordering in, doing whatever they could to try to get themselves taken care of. So for that staff, we don't have a policy that kind of addresses this. And our concern was, is we did also have staff who just called off. And so in our opinion, it was not fair that the staff who just said, I'm not going to go into work, got compensated the exact same as those who came in and spent days away from their family, unable to go home, slept here, slept on a cot, slept in uncomfortable circumstances. So we felt it would be, I felt it would be appropriate to compensate them in a better fashion. So I looked at some sample policies and pulled from Forest Hill. And I approved a one-time salary adjustment to compensate them for $10 an hour more for the hours worked during that period. Forest Hill's policy is $13 an hour more, so I felt $10 an hour was acceptable just to get them through this. And approved a one-time salary adjustment to do that, to compensate our folks that went the extra mile and still came into work regardless of how bad the conditions were. What I would like to do is not have to try to finagle the system a little bit and get a firm policy in place on what your guidance is going forward if you're supportive of a hazard pay policy. When these uni, and this doesn't happen often, once every few years, we may get an ice storm like this. So it's not something that happens all the time. But if we do have this issue arise, I would like to have a policy in place for us to be able to follow that's already been pre-approved by council.
And is this limited on employees or just as many employees that come to work?
So it's really, this only would apply to essential employees. So it's only going to apply to our police officers, firefighters, public work staff, dispatchers. I don't think we would force animal control to come in and ice to deal with an animal issue. That's just one of those. If it did, they would fall underneath police. But primarily our essential workers only. This does not apply, this would not open up a door where we could have an office employee who's not essential say, ooh, I want to make a little extra money. Let me truck on into work. This is for essential employees only, for essential operations.
Who's feeding the dogs while we're freezing? So that would be essential.
Yeah, that's true. I didn't think about feeding them. That's why I'm not in charge of animal control and he is.
That's why the animals are angry.
I don't feed them either, my wife does. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So Ray, who fed the animals? Was it the police officers? Okay, okay. Then they need to be...
This is just a general high-level discussion. I don't have a proposed policy to present to you tonight. I just wanted to, A, kind of gauge your temperature on it, see what you felt. We can look at a couple of different ways of doing it. We could look at an hourly rate like what we did for this past storm with the one-time salary adjustment. We could look at daily rates if you wanted to provide a lump sum daily for that, where we pay every employee, you know, $100 a day hazard pay or something.
What about time and a half?
Well, so I don't want to get, I don't want to get into calling it time and a half because if the storm occurs at the end of a pay period that they would have already triggered over time, then it gets very confusing. So I would keep it one of two ways, either a lump sum daily or an hourly additional, whether it be $10 an hour. Forest Hill's is currently $13 an hour. I've seen other ones from other cities that are lower as well. So we kind of put it right in the mid. Or we could do a lump sum payment, like $100 a day or something along those lines. Most of our staff works somewhere between 10 and 12-hour shifts with the exception of our fire department. Our fire department obviously works 24. We have a fire department equivalent that we did. So all of our police officers and animal control got $10 an hour pay bump when we did the one-time salary adjustment. I think the fire equivalent for that was like $6 and something odd cents for it, but yeah, 667, so...
It's straight out of 24 hours.
Because they're working 48-hour shifts.
Oh, okay, okay.
Straight.
So when will you bring this?
I can bring it to you back next month if there's a general consensus that yes, we would like to approve a hazard pay policy.
Yes.
And would you prefer to have it a lump sum daily or an hourly rate? Is there a preference? You want to both? I'll bring both. We'll make it happen.
Just to make it difficult.
Okay. We'll bring both. And then I do want to thank the crews that come in. I know we had quite a few that came in. And I know specifically one police officer who lived here for five days straight away from his family and kids, so certainly appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Next item, item H, discussion related to public protection classifications results for the city vermin from the Insurance Services Office, Inc.
I'm going to bring Chief up to answer any questions you have. But I received this letter from the Insurance Services Office, or ISO, sharing this letter with you and all of the results. If, I don't know, maybe I'm just a nerd. I enjoyed reading it and looking at where all of our points were coming from and seeing the progress. That's what this letter is, is identifying where all the points came from. It does get a bit confusing if you're not familiar with the fire service. And even if you are familiar with the fire service, I even had to call Chief Wadley and say, hey, I got some questions on how some of these points were calculated up. And he'll be able to provide that clarification to you, so...
So this is all related to fire?
This, no, so this is related to fire and our water system. So the ISO service comes in and they evaluate fire protection service, and they evaluate our water delivery capabilities to set rates for insurance, homeowners' insurance and property ownership insurance. Previously, we were rated at a four. We were hopeful to get a three. We were thinking, yeah, if we get a three, we're happy. And thanks to all the hard work that Chief has put in, all the hard work that Gilbert's put in, the progress, everything, and it looks at everything from not just our apparatus, but training hours, how the guys, how the firefighters are doing their reporting, how many staff members we have on staff, are we inspecting our hydrants? How often are we inspecting our hydrants? How many hydrants are we expecting at a time? How many hydrants do we have? What are the volumes coming out of our hydrants? All this stuff goes into it. It is a very, very robust inspection, right, Randy? And so to be able to go from a four, this letter tells you that we actually got a proposed rating of a two, an ISO two. That puts our fire department in the top 7% in the country. The only rating higher than that is a one, which there's only 3% of the fire departments in the country that have. And a one is very, very difficult to achieve. It's even more difficult for smaller cities to achieve because of the required staffing models that go into it. However, I think that's probably going to be our next goal because looking at some of this, I think we can get there. So we're going to, we're going to keep going. But what this means in translation is, is the lower the number, the lower the insurance premiums that homeowners and business owners have to pay on property insurance. On average, this should save a homeowner around $1,000 a year by jumping from a four to a two.
It could be up to 1,500 bucks.
That's great. But when might that take effect through the insurance company?
So where we're at in the process, the reason why I didn't want, last few months, we didn't formally announce this is because we're still doing a little back and forth with emails and whatnot. The way that the process works is that on the date that we receive this, and that I send a response to Veriskood as the actual assessors, they send this information to the state fire marshal's office. State fire marshal's office has 30, between 30 and 60 days typically, right? It's the very end of them, yeah, to validate that. And then the only positive out of it currently is we were one of the, all of the ones in the area are being reassessed. We were one of the first to get our final evaluation. So we're not behind everybody else who's going through the validation process with state fire marshal's office. They don't have any follow-up inspections. They don't do anything that is subsequent to this. It is merely, does it make sense? Is there anything that is a giant red flag, which there's not? And then it's a rubber stamp. So we're potentially anywhere between zero and 30 some odd days before then they give us the rubber stamp. And then once they do that, then they will send it out to the publisher, to all the insurance. There's a big farming, basically a big farming agency that they will divvy up, and this is what you, or prospective rates that you should be able to do based upon what their information is. And then they will start realityging. So I would anticipate somewhere in mid-year, it would be, probably behoove our residents to go back to their insurance agents and say, hey, I'd like a reassessment of my home insurance rate. At least somewhere beginning around May-June. That's not a promise, but it will for sure be the calendar year. But I would anticipate somewhere around May-June.
Cool. That's great. Yeah.
One other thing, too, I want to make sure I give credit, one of the big department that's a part of this, too, is our dispatch. Dispatch is a big consideration. How we handle our 911 calls, what processes we use to process those calls, the times it takes for a dispatcher to process the call, dispatch the call. So dispatch is another big key point in this as well.
So I'll skim through it. It's a very, I believe you all received the full packet, correct? So I'll kind of just hit the highlights of this one. On page eight, it gives the full breakdown of the scoring. Our total scoring was 83.39. And the matching scoring valuation you could receive is 106.5. The way that that breaks down is at 90, we would actually cross the line and take out ISO one. So do the math there. We're mere points away from it. It's just, I don't know, six firemen, I don't know how big a salary increase. Carry the one, there's a decimal in there somewhere. But yeah, what, sorry, sorry. Earmuffs, earmuffs, earmuffs. But I mean, it's a big hurdle to get to a one. I've been told by many of chiefs, don't do it, it's so much work. It's like the maintenance of it. But you know, it's a goal. It was my 10-year goal, and so I'm not stopping until we get to that finish line. So anyways, so moving on, to mirror what the city manager mentioned, not to take away from, I firmly believe that we could always use more dispatchers because they do, the gods work in there with, you know, the limited staffing that they do. But even with the resources that they have, they got nearly a perfect score. So that's, I mean, that's a huge kudos to the communications, the 9.85 out of 10. So granted, I mean, there's not a whole lot of variables in that one, but still, that's awesome for what they're able to achieve if you go down to ours. So we're a total of the 34.70 out of the 40 total points that we could have accumulated, sorry, 37.18 out of 50, one line below. And I'm just going to go down those because I'm sure you're going to get confused. Namely is, yeah, page...
13.
Specifically, you're probably going to be confused on credit for ladder service. Well, you bought a $1.3 million ladder truck. With all things, there are strategery that's at play, all right? So we have a fire pump, right? We have a fire engine. There are certain necessities, i.e. the gallons per minute that we are able to put onto a fire that play heavily into that. So our fire truck is, has a 1,500 gallon per minute pump on it, and it's got a 500-gallon tank on there. That would give, had we have used that, that would have only gave us about 3, 3 and 1/2, giving us the ladder service credits versus allowing us to utilize our truck as both the engine and allowing the ladder points. That allows us to accumulate far more. So because we were allowed to use the tanker also coupled with this, that gave us the full points awarded for, if you see the, the pump capacity. We got three out of three. Because we were able to establish our 3,000 gallons per minute with both apparatus, that allowed us to get across that finish line. Now, if we had two additional staffing, we could have put both of them as the first due apparatus, and we possibly could have gotten up... due apparatus and we possibly could have gotten another point and a half on the ladder service. But what was more valuable to us when doing the assessment was how, working with the, the inspector, is how do we put the priority, what's the number one, and how do we couple these to be able to basically pull from all three categories to accumulate as many points as possible versus just saying we've got, well, that's great, we put four points for a ladder service, but then we've greatly reduced the six points that we could pull for a pump, or for the pumper and engine capacity. Does that make sense? Is that, I mean, I explain that clearly enough?
Yes.
So I have all, my whole goal was to maximize our, our point value addition. Do we, do I pride ourselves on our truck? Absolutely. The guys, they will, they will take the front of a house on any fire that, it doesn't matter where they're going, they're putting that truck right in the front so they can do truck work out of it. But still, I want to make sure that, that putting out the fire is, is the priority of the ISO assessment. So.
Please.
Um, I'm gonna go down to, down to the, the lower pages where it's actually gets broke down. I'll give you the page number in just a second.
So these are actually your, what you were writing on?
Yes, yes. This is the actual form that, that we were, that we were given back. So so the deployment analysis, that's kind of how it, it's broke down into, that plays into staffing, how we allocate our staffing, where, what apparatus, because obviously, you know that we've got multiple apparatus on our bay. So we kind of guys hop off one and hop onto the other in order to, to approach whatever incident or emergency that they're facing. And then our prior, prior, pre-arrival priorities and tactical priorities, and how we do our incident management structure, and how we develop our who's in command of the fire and how their crews are assigned on that fire. So they, they pull, I had to send them probably about eighteen different policies and that accounted for about two hundred pages of policy that they needed to review to ensure that, that our, our strategic and tactical assessments were, were on par. The credit for company personnel, as you can see, that was one of the, one of the, the most averages to, to lower in. We put nine point nine-four out of the fifteen. He was gracious. As you know, we have four full-time on duty, and we, we have allocated funding for a part-timer to work in conjunction with daily. And so he was gracious and he gave us, go ahead and give us the five for, for personnel on duty. The, the only thing that can improve this one, if, if we were able to get to a six on duty, that would probably take us up to at least fourteen points. I think that that would actually probably be one of the biggest increases for us to get to that ISO one. The, the training and. Just trying to save citizens money. The, the training underneath those, those are simply documentation type things. They require a total of sixteen hours for each of, each individual firefighter per month and then an additional eight hours per driver for new and experienced every single month. All of those objectives are being met. The problem is, I've got new employees and I've got new drivers. So they're, they're hitting all those hours, but I'm not able to produce the historical data to provide, to, to show that because it doesn't exist for somebody who's newly employed by us, right? So that's the, one of the major kickbacks on this one.
Yeah.
We weren't able to actually get all the maximized points out of it because we can't show proof of. Other than that, there, I mean, that, that is the, the biggest thing, you know, the, credit to Gilbert. I, I reached out to him and Ryan and they were able to come up with all of their, their flow charts and, and inspections. There, I mean, there's, there's room for improvement on, on all the, all three departments that, that were within the assessment. But there, there are minor changes that are, that are not going to be, well, other than staffing and all this, operationally wise, there are minor changes that, that we, we can accomplish by just changing up a few things to how we do business. So which, which should not only improve our serviceability and readiness on the day-to-day function, but then obviously on this ISO assessment. So we're gonna actively work to, to improve. And in five years, they have actually reduced it now. It, it used to be ten years that they would come out for standard reevaluation. They've reduced that down to every five years now. So from, in four and a half years from now, we're gonna be ready to rock and we're gonna, that's, that's the finish line for us.
Excellent. Good job.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome job, Chief.
Really?
Next item, consideration of possible action, item A, actions concerning appointments to various boards, commissions, or committees to wit animal shelter advisory committee and planning and zoning commission.
My apologies, I haven't had this pulled up beforehand. So we've got a couple of expiring terms. We'll start with the planning and zoning commission. All members of the planning and zoning commission have actually expired, their appointments have just expired this past month. All wish to be reappointed upon your approval with the exception of Judy Welborn. Judy Welborn has said upon the expiration of her term, she, she does not wish to be reappointed. And she has served on that board and several other boards for many, many years. So may consider some sort of recognition for next council meeting. But we would need a motion, if you, if you so wish, to reappoint for Ora Mayhill, Brenda Edmund, Richard Izarrez, and Tony Young.
Now, Tony's still interested?
Yeah, he didn't say he wasn't. And I told him I would assume he want to be if you don't respond.
So they'll, are they short?
Uh, they will be short one. So there will be one vacancy for Judy Welborn on that board. So if somebody wants to make a motion to appoint those individuals I listed, and you can say just that, and then those names again are Ora Mayhill, Brenda Edmund, Richard Izarrez, and Tony Young to P and Z.
I move we approve the names as read to the P and Z board for another term. Second.
Most remaining second, any further discussion? Call the council.
Place one.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Motion carried.
With animal shelter advisory?
Well, so we do have one vacancy on P and Z. Does anybody have a, a pointy that you want to put on the planning and zoning?
I think we have the one by the next meeting.
Yeah. This isn't gonna be another senior board, I hope. It took forever to fill that one. Okay, we have four, so we can continue to meet with the P and Z. We do have a pending zoning case coming up. So as long as we've got three that will be in attendance, we should be okay to continue that, that hearing. So next meeting, we'll, we'll just need to try to fill that, that vacancy. For animal shelter advisory committee, let's see. We have, all right, the following terms have expired as of four days ago. Ray Rentschler, Dr. Reeves, Susan Mackey.
I'm expired.
Sarah Jones and Stephanie Boardingham. Now Sarah Jones is the Forest Hill citizen representative. She's no longer willing to serve. We have a replacement, a Jimmy, Jimmy Mathis. Okay. So we have an alternative for that one. Would there be any other changes? If not, I'll read all those names off and we can do the same thing to reappoint those. No other changes? Okay. So then the motion needed would be, would be to reappoint Ray Rentschler as the shelter staff representative, Dr. Patrick Reeves as the veterinarian representative, Ms. Susan Mackey as the Everman Municipal Officer representative, Jimmy Mathis as the Forest Hill citizen representative, and Mayor Stephanie Boardingham as the Forest Hill Municipal Officer representative for another term.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the names just read to the animal.
Shelter advisory.
Animal shelter advisory committee.
I second.
Most remaining second, any further discussion? Call the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Ray, can we make sure that Mindy gets Jimmy Mathis's information, email, phone number? And we'll update that. Thanks.
Okay, next item, item B, resolution number two zero two six dash oh two dash oh one, a resolution authorizing continued participation with the steering committee of cities served by Encore and authorizing a payment of ten cents per capita to the steering committee to fund regulatory and legal proceedings and activities related to Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC. I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-six dash oh two dash oh one as read.
Second.
Most remaining second, any further discussion? Call the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is executive session. Item A, section five five one oh seven one, seek advice to the city attorney related to Everman Municipal Water Storage Tank at three oh four Southway Drive, AKA the Columbine well site. Time is seven fifty-three. We're going to executive session.
Let's go do this.